Did it change from what's here?
Thank you. These were ones who don't want to be called, they just wanted their comments to be mine. And no, I'm just told them that I would share it with the board. So it's updated, there were a couple more since Dr. Prietal gave it out too.
Okay.
These are the ones who want to call that. It'd be nice if we could just make an announcement and tell them that all sports and activities are on.
It's not a big deal. Because I had a guy call.
I had a guy call me. And yeah, he started in the six year old, I was talking right there. I said, we're not going to go to do all the sports and activities. So then he was happy.
That made sense.
Yes. Dr. Prietal, here's the list.
Are you making all the phone calls tonight?
Tight right here.
Okay.
Yeah, a little tight.
Oh. What the heck is this? Am I on Board Docs yet? I didn't even sign on.
Set it up preset.
We are live right now. Just so everybody knows, we are live. Whatever you say.
Right now we're live?
Right now we are live.
For some reason I can't get on here, I don't know why.
Come on.
Here we go.
Oh wait, no. If I don't say something, I'll get in trouble. Let's talk.
Rick needs, can, do you have his phone number?
I don't.
He's back in, he needs to log back in.
Oh well, I can't seem to get that off.
Also, Mike Baker should be logging in here shortly.
Are we ready? Oh, okay.
Where is?
I'm in, I'm here.
Thanks, Rick.
Yep.
Mine's not logging on for some reason.
Mine's not logging on either.
Yours was on already.
Yeah, it's not on.
Oh yeah, mine won't come on either. Well, I'm gonna go back this.
Mine never did come on, remember we worked at the, I'm sorry, Mike. It never did come on.
I had trouble logging in too, guys.
Is anyone logged in?
Yeah.
No, I can't get logged in. No one can get logged in.
Honestly?
Why can't we get logged in?
I don't know. I signed on and it just goes to another screen.
So I can't be reached?
It seems like you're logging in and out, Brad.
Password, please.
No, I'm not in yet. And I need the, and I need the agenda.
You can't get in either.
I'm working on it. I have that blue spinning wheel.
I did, yeah. It's just sitting there spinning.
Which one? What's the key? Please. Yes?
I printed off a short one.
I'm back.
This is an old one. Okay, thanks. No, I'm good.
I don't have.
Three, one, two, here.
Come on.
No, fat.
Hey Sharon. Can you please, house cleaning stuff? Can you let everyone know to talk into the mics so the people online can hear it?
Did everyone hear that? Okay, are we ready now?
As much as we can be. Let's get ready.
I want to call to order this board meeting Monday, August 17th at 7:25 PM. And if everyone could stand for a moment of silence and a pledge of allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Could we have a roll call vote, please? Or a roll call? Mr. Baker?
Here.
Mrs. Breen?
Here.
Mr. Francis?
Here.
Mr. Hoff?
Here.
Mr. Hoover?
Here.
Mrs. Erwin Adams?
Here.
Mr. Johnston?
Here.
Mr. Cruz?
Here.
Dr. Malloy?
Here.
Thank you. And I just want to announce, we did have an executive session at 6:00 PM this evening for purposes of personnel. And now we are ready for hearing from citizens.
Can I make a couple adjustments to the agenda first?
Sure.
Personnel. We are removing, you have the personnel list there, you don't have the updated one. Where's my bag, sorry.
No, I've got it here, I just thought I was maybe over.
Alright. There is a removal. Position. Number four, under instructional, Esperanza Tucker has rescinded the offer. Number four no longer exists. You have, you have the updated, the updated that I gave you in the, in executive session, no longer has Esperanza, she is, she is gone.
Updated at 3:35 PM?
Right. E, E1. Position starts at 37,000, that's a misprint. And finally. I can find it. The stipends for lead teacher are withdrawn.
It's on that same page, G1?
G1. Yes. That is withdrawn. Those are the only corrections I have. Thank you.
Okay.
Dr. Madam President, before you start, just so you know, I'm at a remote location. I was able to get into Board Docs, but now it will not let me load any of the attachments. So I'm going to be working at a, a bit of a disadvantage with no hard copy, just so you know.
Okay. Has anyone here gotten in?
No, and I don't have the attachments either because I don't have a packet.
True.
So just FYI.
Okay.
We're chewing up too much bandwidth. No? Alright.
Chuck, I'm sorry, or Dr. Prietal, I'm sorry, can you tell me what position that was, since I can't see? Was removed, what was it supposed to be?
It was, we have to, we have to reopen and, and seek out applicants or, or otherwise fill the position of the Germans' long-term subposition. Alright. Mr. Cruz, you had said something about some of these people may not want to speak, but my question is, I really won't know that until I start down.
I didn't know if you just wanted to announce that, that's not even, not even going to be discussed anyhow.
There was an issue of concern. We received many, many letters and/or calls from, from the public regarding fall sports. There was an item that was, that died for lack of a second on Thursday night that will not be brought back to the floor. Just wanted people to know that, that will not come back to the floor. So that is not a, that is not a, going to be voted on in any way, shape, or form this evening.
So we are still going forward with fall sports and all activities?
Yes.
Everything as usual, nothing has changed. So we wanted to reassure the parents of that.
Right.
So I was just trying to help, if, if a lot of phone callers were going to be about that, that, that they wouldn't have to call in because that's not an issue.
I know, but how do we know?
Well, I'm just saying, if they're watching, they might hang up. Oh, you have to call them.
I have to call out.
Sorry.
How many callers do we have waiting to comment?
16.
Hello?
Mrs. Green?
Yeah.
This is Dr. Prietal from the Altoona area school district. You are on with the board, did you hear my announcement?
I apologize, I did not.
On the board, there was an item that was tabled at last, for lack of a second, at the last board meeting regarding, regarding continuation of sports. That will not be voted on tonight. We are, the, the board has full intentions of running all fall sports and, and other activities.
Okay, that's wonderful to hear, that was my concern, thank you.
You're welcome, bye bye.
Bye.
I'm going to be done on this thing live.
Your call has been forwarded to an automatic voice message system, 81.
I'm assuming they got the word. Hello? Hello?
Hello?
Hello, Mrs. Yost?
Yes.
This is Dr. Prietal, Altoona school board meeting. Before we start, the board, the board will not be voting to eliminate or otherwise cease fall sports. We will be having fall sports and all activities as much as possible in, in light of COVID.
Yes, I just heard that and I appreciate it, it definitely means the world to us right now, thank you.
Okay, hey, you have a good day.
Thank you too.
Bye bye. 12 more. Let me see if I get fat fingers, I'll screw this one up.
Hello, this is Terry.
Terry, this is Dr. Charles Prietal here at the Altoona school board meeting.
Hi, Dr. Prietal.
Real quick, before you start, the board, the board will, the board is in full support of continuing all fall sports and activities as much as we possibly can during the COVID-19 pandemic. Meaning the specs will continue.
Thank you, thank you to yourself and the board for putting our kids first and allowing us to have that choice.
You have a good evening, thank you.
Thank you.
Bye bye.
Hello?
Janelle. This is Dr. Prietal.
Hi, this is Mackenzie Kelly, I'm a junior student athlete at the high. I'm concerned about the athletics.
Hang on, Drew, hang on, Mackenzie. We will have full athletics in the fall along with all activities as much as possible with COVID-19. So we are.
Alright, thank you.
Okay, thanks, bye bye.
Thank you.
That won't work.
Hello?
Hello, Janelle?
Hi, Dr. Prietal.
This is Dr. Prietal, we're at the school board meeting. We will have full continuation of fall sports and all activities as much as possible during COVID-19.
Yes, thank you, I'm watching live, so I'm, I'm sad that I didn't get to read my one pager that I created earlier today. But on behalf of the Altoona soccer team and hockey team, we really appreciate it very much.
Thank you, you have a good evening.
Thank you.
Bye bye. I'm just gonna jump that one. That was Jared.
Hello?
Hello, Paul?
Yes.
This is Dr. Prietal from the Altoona area school board. Just want to give you an update before we get into your conversation. The school board will be continuing all fall sports and all, all fall activities as much as possible during the COVID-19 pandemic.
I mean, I say that again, you're going to continue to do.
We're gonna have sports, sir.
Okay, that's good, because I have, I have, I was, I'm 92 years old, I play golf twice a week, and I've been up at BG, watching the summer games, everybody's doing their job that they should do. And I appreciate the fact that they are going to have it, I would, if I can get to them, I guarantee you I will enjoy them, okay? Because I have three, two in junior high and one in high school playing ball, and three of them in elementary, alright? Thank you for your call, appreciate.
You're quite welcome, you have a good evening.
You too, bye bye.
Yes.
You missed number six, just FYI.
Did I miss six? No, I got, I got Kelly Mackenzie Kelly.
No, Jackie Clouser.
Jackie Clouser, I don't have Jackie Clouser.
She went through, okay, sorry, I just wanted to make sure.
You have an old list. This is, this is the latest one, she just handed me this one. Sorry, Stacy Mason.
Your call has been forwarded to an automated voice messaging system. 8.
That was Dan. That was Dan Casey. That was Stacy, okay, so. This is Dan. Sorry about that. Should have a queue like the radio stations, you just tack them off one at a time.
Hello, please leave a message after the tone.
Those are the easiest ones. Sherry Manley.
Hi, you've just reached 9341342. I can't come to the.
Thank you. I know exactly what she did, she sent us the voicemail. I am so glad.
Hello?
Hi Tammy.
Hi, how are you?
This is Dr. Prietal, I'm with the, the school board meeting for Altoona.
Hi.
Before you start, the board, I'm just not doing it.
I am watching the meeting, but I did want to make a comment if I could, please.
Sure, go ahead.
Um, are you guys addressing these social distancing aspects and allowing spectators at all?
Um, we, whether we allow spectators or not will be strictly up to the PIAA guidelines and state guidelines.
Okay, I, I do feel very strongly about that. And if there's anything you guys can do on behalf, especially of the senior parents, I really would appreciate that. I do feel that when I look at some of the venues, that maybe the coaches and the athletic director could somehow collaborate, looking at the specific, or at the different venues.
We are looking at, we are looking at all those things, but the, the problem is what we are allowed to do as per the state and as per PIAA. Right now, the state has said no fans, is that PIA, that's PIAA, and the state, the state has said no fans. We are, we are constantly having discussions with them about how we can do different things, because obviously, we have the capacity to handle fans and, and with proper social distancing.
Correct.
But evidently, the, the state is not in agreement.
Okay, well, obviously I would agree with what the statement that you've made. But I would like to tell you guys, thank you very much for the capabilities of what you're doing for these children and allowing them to present their talent and creativity, and permitting them the commitment that they've shown in the participation of their events. I do, I do believe these children have earned that display, so thank you very much for that.
You're quite welcome, you have a good evening.
Thank you, you guys as well.
Sorry. Joyce Longstruth.
Hello?
Hello, Joyce?
Yeah?
This is Dr. Prietal here at the Altoona area school board meeting.
Yeah?
Have you been following along online?
Yes, actually, I'm one of the ones that sits outside.
Okay, alright. The board will be, the board, the board is in, is in total support of continuing all fall sports and fall activities as much as possible during the COVID-19 pandemic.
Okay.
So fall sports will continue, ban will continue, all other activities will continue to the, to the greatest extent possible, considering our limitations with COVID.
Okay, I didn't quite understand the whole Altoona curve thing, what was that about?
I'll be back for you. We're working on getting some things where we can live stream at different venues as well, if the state continues to not have spectators.
They're working on, they're working on a live streaming contract with, with the curve to handle if the state won't allow spectators.
Okay, so, you know, I was saying that the ballpark is big enough that if you only allow the parents at least, and you can social distance these parents and require masks. And that would, and then maybe ask them to sign a waiver, if it leaves you from any responsibility.
Our, our issue is not with the parents, it's not with the fact that we want to have fans, we want to have fans also, but this, but right now, the state will not allow it. So we are, we are working within their constraints on this particular item.
Okay.
But we are in constant discussions with them about, about lifting that or making it so more fans can go to the games.
Alrighty.
We're with you.
Okay, well, we really appreciate all your effort. I just take, you know, I hated to see all these kids disappointed, they're working so hard to, you know, practice, and I don't want it to be all for naught. So, I mean, they'd be really disappointed if they couldn't do their activities.
We agree with you totally. You have a good evening, ma'am.
You too, thank you.
Bye bye.
Bye bye.
Come on, machine. There we go. Can't rush it.
Your call has been forwarded to an automatic voice.
Hello?
Hello, Scott?
Yes.
This is Dr. Prietal, I'm here at the Altoona area school board meeting. Are you listening online? Scott? That's quick. Okay, I gotta go back to Michelle Iasalita.
Hello?
Hi, Michelle.
Hi.
This is Dr. Prietal from the Altoona area school board meeting here on Monday night. Um, are you listening online?
Yes, I am, sir, thank you.
So you're, you're well aware of the board's decision?
I'm very happily aware of the board's decision, thank you.
You have any other comments?
No, I don't, thank you so much.
You have a great evening.
You too.
Bye-bye. Last one.
Your call has been forwarded to an automatic voice message system, eight-one-four-nine.
That's the last on the list. I'm assuming anybody who pushed us to the voicemail, that was their intent.
Okay, moving on, um, can I have a motion and a second on the approval of minutes? Minutes from the seven-sixteen board meeting, special board meeting, and the eight-three board meeting?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion, questions? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Um, construction change orders, could we have a motion and a second?
So moved.
I'll second that. Any questions, concerns, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Uh, finance, I'm gonna take all three items together. List of payments, financial reports, and St. Mary's parking lease. Uh, can I have a motion and a second?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions on anything, concerns?
I have news parking in the spaces, I thought since we weren't going to use that lot.
We are gonna need the blue dot lot, which is approximately sixteen spaces, or is it fifteen spaces?
Sixteen.
Sixteen spaces, um. They did change the rent, and they boosted it, but we no longer will be responsible for any snow removal or anything, any of the other issues with.
There's parking there.
All the people, well, right now, it's the business office, it's the, it's the, um, technology people. Later on, it'll be some technology, and we'll also be the, um, also, also be the police.
So you'll be walking down to the investment building from there, or?
No. We're in the CTC until investment savings is ready, and then when we move out, security will move in, and part of technology will move out.
And the, the, the bank will be ready when? When will you be able to move in?
Um, we are hoping, we are hoping at some time in December, probably, probably early January.
Was, was there a timeframe that they were to have this finished, or?
There was a timeframe for them to be out of the bank, which was, um, which was either August or September. They're still planning on being out in September, but we have to do all of the renovations, et cetera, to the, to the bank. It's about, I wouldn't say we're about twenty-five percent done with the bank at this point.
Thank you.
So after that, is St. Mary, is this the last year for St. Mary's?
We will prob, we will probably need to continue the lease on that one lot for the handful of people, either that, or we'll get spaces from the CTC.
I was gonna say, they can't park at the CTC then?
Well, the intention is, this will get us through this year, and the question will be, how many cars do we need? Because obviously, you know, with the police over there, you've got police cars, et cetera, how many spaces are we gonna need? And whether we work out something with the CTC or work out something with the church. Right now, we're gonna, we need what, about twenty-six spaces until, until January one?
What's the rent, because I can't get it open?
It's three-hundred-and-twenty a month.
Okay, that leads me to a question. We have a check on here, check number one-one-six-two-eight-six for five-hundred dollars, but yet the contract calls for three-hundred-and-twenty.
Our lease runs through August right now, our lease will be up, I believe it's, it's August thirty-first. So you're looking at a five-hundred-dollar lease, which is our last month under the old lease.
And then the new one replaces that at three-twenty a month, okay.
And also, we're, we are, there's no more maintenance, and understand, that's a twenty-thousand dollar give.
Okay.
I would like to ask for an explanation of regarding the summary sheet on expenditures and revenue, just so we as a board and also the public is aware of the effects of COVID on our finances. So I don't know who would do that, Sue or Camilla? Just the summary sheet. One on expenditures, one revenues.
These are, these are pre-audited numbers, we still, we're still having our, um, loss runs from UPMC. But the revenue for business privilege and mercantile has been with the extension of the due date.
So, under revenues, I see a, uh, actually, the original budget, a hundred and five, five forty-six, that be revised to a hundred and six, one forty-nine, and there was an uptick also in the expenditures from original to revised.
I, I, I think that we need to go along with what Noah had said, our investment income is up a little bit, maybe what's speaking investment. I have to look at it in depth to see where the increase is. We know that we are down on business privilege and mercantile tax, and we're down slightly on, we're a lot of funded on earned income tax to be here. Some of the other grants may have pushed us a little higher, but I can get the investment number, I know that our investment income is up more than we originally budgeted, which might be the line item there. Um, I have not looked in depth to see where the expenditures are, are changing.
What cost the six-hundred thousand dollar difference is the question, between the original and the, and the revised?
I think if you have something for the next meeting, it's pretty hard for them to come up with.
I think we just need to constantly monitor what's going on with the finances, especially during this COVID time, because there's so many unknowns, and we just need to carefully monitor and use that as part of our planning process for next year.
And I think that that's one of the things we're hoping to do next year at our committee at home meeting, present a final picture, to kind of give you a better analysis on, of where it would be.
And while you're there, Susan, I had a question, kind of a statement, I guess. Um, delinquent real estate tax revenue appears as though it's way up this year.
Yeah.
That is due to Portnoy?
Well, there's your tax, there, Portnoy's revenue has helped that the current year, delinquents are up. We've often had, you have these things on a monthly basis, now it's a quarterly basis, so recognizing the revenue there.
Oh, okay.
And I think with, along that line, I think, uh, some of us have been getting some feedback from citizens about the delinquent tax collection. Uh, for example, one person called my home and said that they had been called because their taxes were delin, delinquent, and their payment schedule had been set up. Then they were notified that over the, uh, COVID situation, they could be stopped. Then they got another notice, they were to start again, but they were greatly increased with fees being added on. So, I, I just think we just need some information, because I know sometimes there's a story behind the story, but, but I think since we did make this move to increase, uh, delinquent tax collections, we need to study the effect. I don't think any of us want people to be losing their homes, and I, I, I think we want to be fair, we do want people to pay their taxes, and we want Portnoy to be able to work with people to see that that happens, and not penalize them. So, I, I think in our committee in the whole, we do it at the finances committee, these changes that we have implement, implemented to decrease expenditures, we just need to get updates on it, to see the effect that's taking place with the changes.
I don't think that agency has to bully people if they're behind on their taxes, they don't, people don't need bullied.
Well, and I don't, I mean, but the agency, Portnoy has sent at least two registered letters to the taxpayers that are delinquent. They, uh, contain a list of fees, so they were notified at least twice, registered letters, and then two more times without registered letters. Given the opportunity to call and make payment arrangements, or to submit a hardship application to do that, if they hadn't notified Portnoy, they would have been given some tax relief with fees that have been set. The people that are getting the fees now responded in no manner to the collection.
I think we, I think Frank's right, we should have a sit-down about this company.
I agree, I, I've heard stuff too.
Do they ever negotiate their fees to maybe reduce them if the people are paying their, their payments on time?
There are a number of different hardship programs that companies provide, so if they get impacted then, they can negotiate fees, they can make payment arrangements, but they need to take the action, we tell Portnoy to make them.
Okay, so they are bendable with the people, they're not inflexible?
That's my understanding, yes.
Okay.
Can I ask a quick question, finance-wise? I know where there were some rumblings from the federal government about not, uh, funding schools if they didn't have their kids back in full-time brick and mortar. Is there any report on that, or are we seeing any difference in what the federal government is gonna provide to our school district?
We have not heard anything regarding that particular topic from any of the standard channels from the state. It hasn't come from PDE, it hasn't come from any of the, any of the federal programs people. There's been, yes, that was said politically, but it has not been, it has not been seen in reality at this time.
Okay, and if that changes, we will be notified, correct?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Any more comments, questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Um, now moving on to policy, we have Altoona school district policy first reading, final reading, and policy meeting summary. Can I have a motion and a second?
So moved.
I'll second it then. Um, any questions, concerns? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Uh, moving on to education, volunteers, elementary ACA, revised Altoona High School and Junior High School twenty-twenty ATSI plan, St. Francis University Cooperative Agreement, and Learning Express twenty-twenty-one school calendar. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second? Thank you. Um, questions, concerns, comments?
I'd like to chime in on the revised ATSI plans, and I want to thank Mr. Hatch and Mrs. Mangan and Mr. Neely for taking another shot at those, and they sent me the drafts that are attached here. Uh, one of the things I stressed at the last meeting when we talked about this, the initial draft of the plans was to do something more with the social emotional learning aspect. Um, they have added some of those things in, but I recommended that we should really strongly consider using the PA school climate survey. Um, those, it's not specifically mentioned in there, at least that I saw. It's possible that I missed them, uh, looking at the revisions, so, um, just, I wouldn't hold it up, I'm not saying I would, but I really, really think that if that's not part of this plan, and I searched the PDFs, but if it's not part of it, I really think it should be, uh, done, maybe outside of the plan if it's not there.
Mr. Baker, I've been in direct communication with IU, and we're in the process of working with PDE to get our codes. Um, we have a calendar for multiple surveys to go out this year, one in the fall and one in the spring. So, we will be doing that district wad, um, and I indicated that to both, uh, Mr. Neely and Mrs. Mangan. If it was not explicit in the plan, I assure you that it is and it works.
Excellent, thank you.
Anything else? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Uh, personnel, can I have a motion and a second?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, um, questions, concerns? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Student services, Nolton Diagnostic Service Agreement and ACRP LoA. Can I have a motion and a second?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, thank you. Any comments, questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Business operations, transfer of funds, Amtran contract, Amtran driver's list, alternate transportation solutions, STA driver's list, capital reserve list of payments, ca, capital reserve list, list of payments for approval, capital projects list of payments, repository bids, and William P. Kimmel Furniture. Can I have a motion and a second?
So moved.
Second.
Any comments, concerns, questions?
I did have a concern, the transfer of funds, uh, what's that property? What, what, what tax, what?
It was a, it was a transfer tax, was it not? What was the property?
Oh, so the whole, the whole court was. Oh, okay, good, thank you.
Any others? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. New business, Logan Township Police. EDNAD update, revision of COVID athletic plan, we probably should do that separately?
You don't have to.
Is Phil, Phil gonna speak on that, or not?
Don't think we need to.
Okay, and, um, Title IX Coordinator. Can I have a motion and a second?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions, concerns?
Well, I had a question on eleven oh one, Logan Township. They're coming in to do a training, and they, it's a use of facilities, we stand, we, we, so we usually, in all past practices, we have, we have given them access facility as part of our cooperative agreement.
I mean, do they, is it going to be clean when they're done, or we take care of it?
They'll be cleaning, it'll, it'll be ready for the next school day.
Okay.
Thank you, I mean, one of the biggest, I think, calls happening was, uh, this occurred on the same day as the cross-country meet. It was a situation that became a problem at Park, so I, I don't know if that's, if it interferes with any school. Saturday and Sunday. But that, that's the only issue, and I think one year maybe, they were doing an actual training, and, uh, somebody might have put down through a ceiling.
I'd like, I have a follow-up on Mr. Cruz's question, that same eleven oh one. So, I, I'm glad to hear that the school will be cleaned. I, I think specifically, the question I'd like to have answered is, is it going to require an additional cleaning, or is that something that normally happens on Sunday? I, I'm just worried if it gets cleaned on Monday, and then they're in there, do we need to bring extra people in on a Sunday night?
What'll, what happens is the Sunday night crew is your, they work Sunday through Thursday, your second shift, so second shift will do a standard disinfecting when they come in on Sunday, so it won't be an extra cleaning.
Great, thank you.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Under new business, I'd just like to put this out as a motion, that, uh, we bring in our twelfth graders, person to person, uh, for their last year of education. Just like to put that form of motion.
Okay, do we have a second?
I'll second you.
Okay. Discussion.
I know you can't vote on it tonight because it needs public, uh, comment, so I just wanted to put it out there, uh, that, uh, I don't know how, how we're gonna do it, but personally, you know, our twelfth graders last year took a beating, not just the twelfth graders, our ninth graders and sixth graders took a beating, but, uh, twelfth graders, you know, something special. But 12th graders, you know, something special. These kids should be together for their last year. So, uh, so that's just my opinion. I don't know what anybody else feels, but that's, that's just the way I feel.
You know, if I may, I'm present, there's, um, there's teachers told me they never got to say goodbye to their kids this year. And that was sad and that affected them and, you know, it is what it is.
Yeah, I heard, I heard that from many of the parents that the kids really miss that.
If I may, we can make that a priority. The thing is we have to have access to the building and it's, it's going to be contingent on those things occurring. And we also have to look at the logistics of it. I asked the board to let us get the year started and get those pieces in place before we're working on another plan.
That's why I asked, because the building won't be finished for a month or so.
The, the B building will definitely be, will definitely be the end of September, so.
So you're actually the social distance, you'll, you'll need the B and A building most likely to, to have a full social distance.
So.
And I, I agree with Dave that senior should be a priority getting back into school. And, and I think we need to also keep continually updating on where things are in our community and our, our school district so that we can get kids back in school as soon as possible. I think parents overwhelmingly want their children in school. But we are required to follow, uh, social distancing guidelines and other state requirements, or actually CDC and Department of Health requirements to make that happen. So, uh, we, we as a board just constantly need to keep updated and, and keep, uh, our foot on the gas as far as getting kids back in school, but safely back in school.
And I agree with that. And this board, everyone wants every student back in the school as soon as humanly possible. And I think the key to that is going to be how it works when we start bringing these students back. If it goes well and we have no problems, I would say that getting the rest of the students back is probably going to happen rather quickly. And, you know, we all want that, we're all striving for that. But we do have the restrictions from the state and the federal government and the governor. And it, it's just, it's very difficult. You have no idea what the administration is going through in trying to open the doors to our students. It's not an easy task and it's very fluid. Things change minute by minute, day by day. And it's very frustrating to us as well, but we, it is our goal to get all of the students back as soon as we possibly can.
And I think we need to commend our superintendent and administration, teachers, everybody working on planning to, uh, to make this happen. Uh, everybody's doing a super job and I know you're under a lot of stress and anxiety, but keep up the super job. I think many in the community have told me their disagreement with, with our plan, or parts of our plan, but at the same breath they're saying, but we wouldn't want to make that decision. And those of you who do, we appreciate your effort. So the school staff needs to know, I know as a board member, appreciate your effort.
I think the people are being very, um, understanding. They're very frustrated because their children went back. I, I talked to a gentleman that he said when he told his daughter she would be virtual or cyber, that she broke down and she cried. And this is what parents are dealing with too. It's, it's really tough on them, but it's tough on everyone. And I know they understand, but they're, they're in a tough position too.
Can I add? Uh, if everybody in the community wants to do their part, which we all are all gonna do, one really good way of doing that, guys, is just follow the guidelines that have been handed down. When you're out in public, wear your mask, do your social distancing. Let's stop this spot virus from spreading. Over the weekend in out, or in Blair County, we had 34 more cases. We're not in a bubble. Please, everybody do your part. We all want to see the kids back. Hopefully they will be back very soon. Let's get this thing behind us. Let's hope there's not another one of these things ever. So let's all do our parts to make sure this virus just goes away.
So do we vote on this or how, how does this do for the, just get a consensus?
The motion?
Yeah.
I think we have to get.
Since there's no, since there's no public comment, it needs public comment, uh, can we get a consensus and then?
I think we will, we will work towards this and we'll, and we will put it into, we, we will, we will be working on the bits and pieces as we move forward and hopefully we'll be able to have a discussion with the board in the September meeting.
I just hope the majority of the, I don't know if the majority of the board will agree with it, but, uh, but it's something that we can look at.
Absolutely.
I think we have to have a way to do that before the board can really vote on it.
I agree. I mean, we've put a lot on our plate, we're putting more on it, so.
Yeah, I, I think we have to wait until a time when the administration can look at it and see what can be done.
We have time.
Okay. Okay, moving on, committee chair reports. Any of the committee chairs have anything?
It's more of a house cleaning issue. I want to ask, uh, Mr. Priatell or Brad. A quick question. The teachers at the, uh, level of four and five who are coming up to the junior high, how are we going to handle with them getting their materials? They're basically, their class is packed up and moved into the junior high. And then hopefully, once we go back to normal, how about going back? How are we going to set that up to give them the time to do it?
Well, we have to, we have the, the six in-service days of five of which, some of that time will be there. We, we will, they could coordinate with their principals and we will be flexible on how we, making the building accessible and ensuring them that they, they have the time that they need.
Are we gonna, uh, make sure they don't lose any? I know you're talking about that, but so they don't miss any in-services or trainings that they need during that?
Absolutely.
All right, thank you.
We've, and, and remember, we flexed them three days at the end of the school year last year too. So we, we have a little bit of a cushion, but we will, we will make sure that, that it's taken care of the best of our ability. Here's the thing, if somebody has an issue, they need to bring it to our attention because I would say 99 times out of 100, when it's brought to our attention, it's handled. It's, it's just a ma, it's just a matter of us being aware there's a situation to deal with. And, and I want to.
I just made you aware of it, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I want to, I want to extend out to the teachers. We, we've had a really hectic two months. We've done a lot of surveys, we've, we've, we've put a lot of committees together. There's a lot of pieces that have to get handled with, with virtual curriculum design and, and other aspects of pulling this whole thing together in a matter of three weeks, well, two and a half weeks now. We appreciate your dedication, we appreciate your hard work. We're doing everything we can to make, to make the school safe and to ensure that our kids can get a quality education and you can do it in a, in a safe environment. I really would like to request that anyone who is a retiree of the district, if you would be willing in helping us out, we sent all, we sent out a letter, we need approximately 30 certified slash trained subs. It's a, it's a 45-day assignment to get us through the first nine weeks. If, if you could help us out, we would deeply appreciate it. Contact my office, contact Paula Foreman, contact Brad, contact Haley. Just let us know and, and we will reach out to you with the specifics, but we really need some help here in this first nine weeks. Thank you.
Now, now could this be full-time or could this be part-time?
It's gonna be, it, it's going to be the first nine weeks. It's gonna be through ESS.
I mean, like doing a day, could it be a half a day?
If we need that, we'll, we'll have to figure out what's happening with it. Right now, we're really hoping for folds, but, but if, but if we need ha, but if we have halves, two halves make a whole. And we just have to, we have to make sure we have the manpower to make this happen.
Gotcha.
Being, being one of those retirees, not too recent, uh, one of the big concerns will be how will it affect my retirement? So like, I, I think that's a big question that needs to be addressed.
As, in working through the process, because we're going through ESS, it will not be going through the public school systems, public, it will not be going through the PISers, retirement system will have no impact on your retirement whatsoever. Even if it did, you would, you would be able to sub for 90 days. So we're not even coming close to that threshold within nine weeks. Please consider it, we need your help desperately. Thank you.
Are you volunteering?
No. My garden is just ready to harvest.
Chuck, a real quick question on the subs as well. And I, I mean, where is the money coming from? Cause we're gonna need a lot of subs.
This is coming from, this is coming from the equity funding that we received from the state. We received approximately 240 some thousand dollars from the state and these funds will come from that. Plus the, the other, um, the, the other funding we received earlier, not the COVID, but the stuff that's coming specifically, the funds that are specifically coming from the state for equity to ensure connectivity and, um, and quality education as, as well as possible in this situation.
Also you use very little with any subsidies at the secondary level, which specifically.
Is again, which is again, going to help us that cost.
And I would like to thank the teachers and the staff and everybody. I know you're working very hard and I know it's under a very frustrating circumstances, but I do appreciate that everything that you're doing to try to get our students back. And again, I ask the parents, if you will just please bear with us. I do understand the frustration and we will get your students back here as soon as we possibly can. Thank you. Anything more?
Can I add? Chuck, can I add something real quick?
Sure.
Yes, I want our elementary teachers to know one thing. The way this plan was put together was not put together with any malice or any, um, fourth thought. We weren't trying to say that elementary teachers are not important because that level of education for that grade level is extremely important. And that's why we felt the need to have those teachers and those students actually in person. We understand the efforts of the elementary teachers. We understand you're doing an incredible job. Your efforts are greatly, greatly appreciated. And that will pay off in the future for those kids that you're going to be teaching face to face when you come back to school. We're not slighting you at all. We understand exactly what you have to do and the job you do for us. So please, don't feel like we were slighting you. You're doing a great job, keep it up. And believe me, the district appreciates your efforts.
Thank you, thank you to, to the board. Parents, I know the, I know these are crazy times. A lot of things are, are, are creating pressures on us in every, at every turn. I thank you for your cooperation, I thank you for your help. Hopefully, we're going to get through this together.
Okay, anyone else?
Check that, we will get through this together.
Thank you, Rick.
All right.
Meeting adjourned. Thank you. Board members, if you could hang around here a minute?